Okay, I will call to order the Oregon City Commission meeting for Wednesday, July 5th, 2017. Previous to the, oh, I guess following this, we're gonna have an executive session. O R S 192-6602E to conduct deliberations of persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. We do not anticipate coming back into regular sessions, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if you call or roll, please.
Commissioner Ide, here. Commissioner Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Mingleberg is absent this evening. Mayor Holliday.
Here. If you please stand and join me in the flex.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, under ceremonies and proclamations, we have a proclamation for Parks and Rec Month. I'm not gonna read that. I will sign it, and if somebody wants to see it, they can see it on the city's website. Moving on, citizen comment. Do we have anybody for citizen comment tonight? Okay. Then, everybody okay with the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
All right, then we're gonna move on to 6A, P C 17 dash 078, first reading ordinance 17 dash 1008, annexation of 0.92 acres at 7, not 19763 South Parish Road, planning file A N 16 dash 0002. Ms. Turway.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna introduce our Assistant City Attorney, Carrie Richter, to provide disclosures, followed by a presentation. Walter, a planner at the city.
Thank you. One public hearing on land use applications, on land use application has been scheduled tonight. A staff report has been prepared for each, for this application has been made available to the public seven days before the first public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each, to this proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The quasi judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart, right over there on the wall. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. You should fill out your address on the card, so the city will notify you of its final decision. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. Any person may submit written material while the public record is open. Any written materials received by city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they're not given to city staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony, or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence, must make that request before the public testimony portion is closed. If the commission makes a decision to which you disagree, any issue that you wish, may wish to appeal must have been raised for the consideration of the city commission. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence, that the city and all parties may respond, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the state Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional and other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issues precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Now, at this point, we will open the hearing. I think you already did that.
No, I haven't yet, but...
Okay.
So we'll open the public hearing.
Does any commissioner have any experte contact, conflicts of interest, bias, or any other statements to declare?
Yes. So, I've known Betty for probably, I don't know, 25 years, something like that. When she first purchased the property and started building the house, there was an issue with the sewer and the annexation and all that. She called me up. I put her in touch with city staff. They worked through those issues. Since then, there was another issue with the speed sign that got taken care of, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that there is some record of Betty and I communicating.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Nope.
You all visited the site?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
I've not.
Very nice home.
Anyone in the audience wish to question the disclosures of the commissioners? Seeing none, we will now commence with the planning staff report. Mr. Walter.
Thank you. This is one of six slides. Run over them. Property is within the urban growth boundary. It has been in the urban growth boundary since 1975. It's low density residential. County zoning right now, future urban 10. That will not change with this application. The application doesn't include a request for rezoning at this time. The annexation is a requirement as a consequence of hooking up to a failed, because of a failed septic system. Property was hooked up to city sewer already in August 2016, and also water connections. This parcel is surrounded by the city limit, which includes the right-of-way of Parish Road and Central Point Road. As you can see from the previous slide, it's part of an existing county island, so it does not create a county island. It actually makes this county island smaller. It also meets the requirements for Senate Bill 1573. It has a comprehensive plan designation. It's contiguous to the city limit. We can provide services to it. It meets all of the city requirements for an annexation. No rezoning or further redevelopment is required nor authorized with this application. Water and sewer connections are illustrated here. You can see where the sewer lateral is stubbed into the site now, on the western boundary, and it's eight-inch sewer line currently in Parish Road, eight-inch water lining Parish Road and Central Point Road. 0.92 acres, but due to the location of the house on the property, it's very unlikely that there could be any redevelopment of this parcel. As far as district and boundary changes, territory would be removed from Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, enhanced law enforcement district upon annexation. It will remain the school district, the fire district, and Clackamas River Water District. City's going through a process of determining properties that will need to be cleaned up as part of a larger de-annexation process with CRW, and until that time, we're recommending this property remain as a CRW customer, and then we'll take care of that de-annexation process later. And then they are required to annex separately to the Tri-City Sewer Service District in order to connect to the sewer plant, and upon the approval of the annexation by the city commission, then you would concur with their application to Tri-City Sewers Service So, the staff report goes through in detail the compliance factors with Chapter 14.04060. Annexation factors, we believe it represents a positive balance of factors, and therefore can be annexed into the city. We're recommending that you approve on first reading ordinance 171008 and adopt the proposed findings, reasons for decision, and recommendations. And if you have any questions about the conditions of approval attached to the staff report, I'm happy to answer those.
Questions? Does the applicant have anything to say? Okay. There's no public comment, so I'll close the public hearing. I hear a motion.
Move to approve ordinance number 17...
First reading.
First reading of ordinance number 17 dash 1008.
Second.
Moved in second. Ms. Richter.
Ordinance number 17 dash 1008, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City approving annexation proposal number A N 16 dash 0002, and approving the annexation of certain property located at 19763 South Parish Road to the City of Oregon City.
Is there any further discussion? Call or roll, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ide.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Mayor Holliday.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Under general business, we have Willamette Falls Locks disposition study comment. We all signed, isn't that the same letter we signed just a while ago? Yes. So, Ms. Turway, you have a...
I do, thank you very much. We're here tonight to just give a brief update on the Willamette Falls Lock and a draft disposition study and a degraded environmental assessment that was put on by the Army Corps of Engineers. Just a little history before we start. The locks were first opened in 1873. They were dedicated to the Corps in 1914. They took possession in 1915. They administered traffic on the river ever since. They were placed in seasonal operation in early 2000. Before that, they had been quite busy. Before 1990, there was a lot of primarily log, logs moving back and forth along the locks. And since then, there was some changes to the Environmental Species Act, which listed a spotted owl, as well as chinook salmon is potentially is dangerous species. And because of that, the amount of logging in Oregon reduced quite a bit. And because of that, the amount of cargo that went through the locks also reduced quite a bit. Specifically between 1990 and 1997, it got reduced by 99 percent, so a large chunk. And that's what led to the seasonal operation, and now we have a closure as well. There is some concerns about the locks that the Corps have, and it relates to what to do next into the future, since they've been closed for so long. And so this purpose of this study is to figure out how to proceed. Some of the dangers that exist now are that the locks help create the two distinct levels of the water, obviously, below and above the falls. Above the falls is called the upper pool. So the level of the water above the upper falls, in the upper pool, is significant to P G E because it affects their power supply and how they create electricity. It also relates to a lot of environmental concerns, so there are, again, endangered species that live around this area. And if you were to remove the dam, or if the dam were to fail, then there would be uncontrolled water over that, those dam locks. And with that uncontrolled water, there is concern that some of those species of fish might not find the ladder, or the juvenile fish might not get over the falls at all. There's also concern that some of the gates, we'll go through the gates specifically, but if there are failure in a few of the gates midway through the line, that that would potentially affect the safety for some of the employees working at the mill site. So, a lot of concerns on the future of the locks. Again, we talked about the purpose was just to see if the locks still meet the need of the Corps of Engineers. So this study is a study by the Corps of Engineers, so it's from their point of view. What was the purpose of the locks, are they still meeting that purpose? And if not, how do we start to think about disposition of these locks? And are there any actions that should be taken in order for that disposition to occur? Changing the hands of the locks literally takes an act of Congress. So this is a very thoughtful study that's being done, and it's the start of a long process. Here's a little bit more detail about the locks, and you can kind of see them shimmying up the river on the opposite side of the legacy project. So they're on the westland side and under their jurisdiction. And you can sign and see the P G E plant and the active paper mill. Here is a map of the conditions of the locks. You can see that there are lots of places that are unstable, and that is the cause of concern. The study came up with eight alternatives, it's zero through seven, and of those eight alternatives, they went through the purpose of the Corps, and they sifted out five of those that didn't meet the intent of the Corps. So, the ones that are highlighted in orange were still sort of viable options, but ultimately, the study recommended option number two, which is to release the lock to another entity in a non-operational status. The list of options includes do nothing, spend money to invest into the lock so it's fully operational, and everything in between. And you can kind of see on the screen the cost for each of these operations. The in-between option that was proposed ultimately in the study is about 1.9 million dollars, and that's just to fix some of the safety concerns. So we started by talking about safety concerns, and so the Corps recognized a need to fix some minor safety concerns before it is turned over to another entity, whoever that entity is. So they're not fixing it so it's fully operational, it's just the minimum repair for safety concerns. Here's another detail about the transfer, the non-operational lock. You had signed a letter of comment, which is a comment to the Corps of Engineers in support of this option. Also, we found a lot of jurisdictions and entities also supporting this option. There was various letters from cities around here, as well as the consortium of mayors as well. The next steps for the study is for us to submit our comments by July 12th. They'll take those comments and digest them. They may add another option or not, and their final study is due, expect about late August or September. This is the draft study, so it was nice that they had the opportunity for us to comment on the draft study in the first place. So, moving away from the study specifically, I wanted to talk a little bit about the related work as well. There is a Willamette Falls Locks Working Group, and they meet monthly up at the county offices, and the thing that they're working on right now is a local economic study. So, they are figuring out what the economic value of the locks opening is. They're working through the R F B process this week, next week, so they're very, at the beginning of this process. We expect to see that study completed by December, and that will tell us if there, what the economic value is locally for the opening of the locks, and how it relates to everything. In the draft study that we had, there was obviously options for removal of the locks, or putting money into full working locks, and that is one perspective. It's really a high level, though, right? We don't know exactly how much it will take to put these locks into working order, and so this economic study will help us sort of place this against that. So we'll get to know what is the economic value. We also know that there's value beyond our economic value, so we do have a long history with the locks. The locks is designated as, on the National Register of Historic Places, it is very culturally significant. So whatever happens to the locks, there would have to be a Section 106 process that occurs to identify how, whatever changes occur, will be culturally sensitive. There was a Senate bill on Monday, it got passed. It was Senate Bill 256. What the essence of the Senate bill was, is that it was the state saying that they support an entity to, they support an entity to be created to answer questions, to take ownership of the locks. So we don't know what that entity is, but it's the state specifically saying that they'll provide money to a group to help answer questions, like what would governance look like, and what would funding look like, which is a very significant thing. And we have this Willamette Falls Working Group going on at the same time, so we'll kind of see how the layout of these groups work. In the Senate Bill 256, the mayor or the mayor's designee is specifically listed on the new Senate Bill 256 group, so we're not totally sure, will two groups exist, or will it merge into one? That's, we'll have to figure that out, since it's...
I'm guessing that this will, that it will turn out like the last task force that I sat on, it will be, you know, convened by the governor, and will go for a year or two, depending on what goes on.
Yeah, a lot of questions, and it will be sort of sifting through to firm up what the cost would be, and logistically, how would it work, and what would this entity look like? So our comment, I just want to be clear, that our comments support the option in the study, which is to provide an opportunity for the locks to be transferred to another entity. It doesn't tie us into any obligations to fund anything, or be a part of any entity. We're just not there yet, right? We're taking the steps to form the organizations to understand more, and that's all I have.
So, let me just make a comment. If we go back to the slide that had all those numbers on it?
Yeah.
Yeah. So keep in mind, these are all Army Corps of Engineers numbers, and those numbers are wildly inflated, I mean wildly inflated. Mr. Burnet, who is one of the owners of Wilsonville Concrete Products, who regularly used the locks, and in fact was the guy who moved the ferry down through the locks to get it repaired and then back up, they've been taking care of the locks for the last 25 or 30 years, and he says that the number is probably closer to 800,000 or 900,000 dollars to repair those gates, rather than the, you know, 1.9 or 5.56, or whatever it is, you know? Some of these numbers are just crazy. But I have certainly let people know that, that filling in the locks is not an option. So, I think as we move forward in the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, the locks are gonna be a key piece of making all of that other stuff happen. That's all I have.
Do you have someone who'd like to provide a public comment, if you wanted to take that for a brief...
Sure. Mr. Gifford.
Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. I just wanted to be on the record to let you know that the Oregon City Business Alliance, of which I'm a director, has written a letter of support for the transfer of ownership of the locks from the Corps, and so we are, we are definitely supporting this option, that we want to keep this in the, in the community as a functioning waterway. And just want to let you know that if you need assistance, or any additional support, we stand ready to write any other letters, or do whatever else we could do to help.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Other comments? Okay, then. Moving on. Anybody have anything to pull from the consent agenda?
Nope.
Then I hear a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved to approve by Commissioner Shaw, second by Commissioner Ide. For the discussion, call or roll, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ide.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Mayor Holliday.
Aye. On communications, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. First off, on this Willamette Falls Locks Working Group, we do need to identify a representative of the mayor or the commissioners who would like to sit on the existing task force, as well as what's created out of the Senate bill. So if there are volunteers, please let the mayor know.
Commissioner Ide, weren't you, weren't, are you on the working group now?
No, Eric was on the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition, is that what you mean? And I was the alternate.
No, no, there's a separate group, right?
This is the, it used to be Commissioner Polly, and we haven't replaced it since she left.
Oh. What, what does it entail? How much, was that the one that met at the county that you were talking about?
It's once, once a month.
Once a month?
Mm-hmm. Yep. So if folks want to think about that, and shoot either the mayor or myself an email, and we can...
Yeah, that's fine.
Come up with a representative for that. Second thing, the 2017 Clackamas County Services and Coordination Fair is gonna be held Thursday, August 3rd, from 4:30 to 6:00, at the County Development Services Building. This event is for elected officials and staff of cities in Clackamas County, really trying to create collaboration, increase awareness of county services, and build relationships amongst the county and the cities. They do request that we RSVP by July 11th, so if you have not received the invite, or you would like to go and want us to RSVP for you, please send either myself or Katie an email, and we can help you out with that. And last but not least, I'm gonna pass around our six-month goals update on completing the goals of the commission. Obviously, we are just getting started, but there are some of these that extend over multiple budget years, so you'll have a brief comment section on the updates that have happened in accomplishing the goals of the commission, and obviously, if you have any questions, after you have a chance to look at that, please let me know. And that concludes my updates tonight.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
The only thing I'd like to say is, I really enjoyed the Heritage Festival, and the volunteers that gave their time, and what a wonderful job they did. And, you know, you can always learn a little bit more about this city. It's phenomenal, the role the city has in the history of the United States. And went to multiple buildings, and just, just a tremendous day, and a great job by everyone involved. That's it.
Commissioner Ide.
Uh, let's see. I also participated that day, and was at the cemetery, talking all about the Lederer family, and learned all about their gravesite myself. So it was a day of learning for me, as well as communicating. Nice event that weekend. And also, I attended the Best of Oregon City Red Carpet Event, and Oregon City received the best place to take a stroll, and the McLaughlin Promenade was given that first-place award. So we received this, this from that. So, it was a very fine event, if you were able to attend it, and I recommend that you go in the future, and Laura was there as one of the emcees and others, and it was just a very high-class event, one of the best in Oregon City I've been in in a long time. And then, let's see, what else did I do? Jim Tompkins, as you all know, passed away recently, and a community memorial was held for him a week or two ago, and I attended that. A very nice event honoring all of his contributions to our community. Also, I arranged, along with the Optimist Club, a tour of the mill site for about 15 optimists, and none of them had actually attended a tour before, so they were all newcomers to the mill. What? Oh, that's right. Wow.
Your commissioner's first, optimist's second.
Okay, I forgot.
In full disclosure, Commissioner Shaw was the only one that had attended before. And then, just wanted to point out again, our enhancement grant meeting, we granted nearly $200,000 in grants to help beautify our city this couple weeks ago, so I think that was a really big event. That's it.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, so, uh... (inaudible). Don't just slide it across.
Hey, full disclosure.
Okay. Anyway, yeah, so I attended the Best of Oregon City, too, and, you know, in the beginning, I was thinking, okay, what's this gonna be, you know, and stuff, and I was pleasantly surprised of how a professional and red carpet event that turned out to be, and that wonderful emcees, and, and it was a great event, and I told Jonathan that afterwards, too, because he asked me, he said, "Do you think we should continue this?" I'm saying, "I think so."
Absolutely.
Because there's a lot of, of companies and businesses there that got, got some publicity through the book and everything, that a lot of people didn't probably know existed, and so it was a great thing for that. So, and so they're one of the, one of the elements in there was the best of, best park in Oregon City, and we have a plaque, which I have in my office, which I'll bring down here, that'll say best park was Rivercrest Park, so similar to this, and I'll get that down here and stuff. So that's pretty cool, that's a really good park, and great job Phil keeping that rascal running, and the chief can keep the graffiti off of that, and it'll be good, so. Got a little issue with that, but, and I did appreciate Commissioner Ide putting the tour together for the optimists here, that was, and she's correct, a lot of those people never been down, and they were just awestruck with that thing, and then, it was kind of nice, because Kelly Reed did a great job in explaining, when I went on it, we hadn't designated these buildings that we were gonna keep, and all that stuff, when I'd gone on before, so now, we could actually see what was gonna be kept, and how this was all gonna kind of look, you know? So, she did a great job on that. And also, on the heritage days, I didn't attend a lot, because I had a little six-year-old with me, but we came over from the spray park at the library, and got into Irma Tinger House, and that's a great project, and I know we put a little money into that, but it turned out great, and I'm looking forward to a... to a, a, a plan to make that operational and everything, so nice job, Mr. Lewis, on that. So, that's it.
So...
One more thing? Just one, one quickly. I'd, Chief Ben pointed out today that the homeless liaison officer, Mike Day, it was his first full week on as, in that new position, and he had some really great experiences already this week related to assisting homeless people and help utilizing county services as well to provide the help that was needed, so that he's doing just the job that he was hired to do, which is being a liaison. And congratulations to your department for doing that.
Did you want to expand on that, Chief, at all, or?
Thought I was running this meeting.
I'll say this, we're going to, we're, I talked to Tony a little bit ago about maybe in a, in a month or so, in a month or so, coming in and kind of introducing Mike, but then having him talk a little bit about, he's already got, been thinking about these things for a long time, but kind of share some of the way that he's looking and talk to you about some of the stuff that he's already doing. He's working on some stuff with bathrooms right now, so.
You're just going to drop that out there? Yep. Okay. Well, as most of you know, I was gone for most of the month of June in Philadelphia and then in Miami Beach for the United States Conference of Mayors. Had a lot of interesting discussions with mayors from across the country, a lot of interesting seminars. The most thing I'm, the one thing I'm most excited about is I've been appointed to the United States Amtrak Mayor's Advisory Committee. So, mayors from across the country are part of that, and I'll be one of the two or three on the West Coast. So, that gives us a little more leverage with Amtrak, not a lot, but some. I do have a direct line to an Amtrak guy they didn't have before, so that's good. We had a good time, and it's always exciting. We had a couple of gifts given to us when we got there. One of them was a, the Guitar Hero Supreme Edition, which is two of the guitars with all of the wireless stuff that goes, that goes with Xbox, and so I talked to Mo, and we're going to, we're going to send that over to the library. And then, another, they got a big picture that they sent to all of us that has the U.S. Conference on it, and we're going to leave that here at City Hall somewhere, so just to be clear that I'm not accepting gifts over $50. So, other than that, I missed all of those things because of all the stuff I was doing this month, but it's good to hear that everything went off without a hitch and all that stuff went well. I know I whined at Mayor Wheeler quite a bit about whether he was going to have the mayors walk in the Rose Parade this year, and then it turned out that I couldn't go because I was actually on the plane that day, so. That's it for me. Anybody else have anything for the order? Then we're adjourned.